One, one, start the meeting. First, I have the first time you present the year.
Okay. Um, so we have packets. You have financial statements that we... I would take my mask off, I don't do this. Since we're social distancing here. The first page is... So you see these pages here, you have two sets. One is called 4001 and one is 689. And these are the financial statements that the state... This is in that format. Oh! Oh, you need something? Oh, you're using your thing? The what? Your table. I like my own.
Oh, good.
I did. I was just using yours because that just looks okay. Mine's a little bit different. It's my own style. Okay. So I'm going to go back. So, 4001. You'll see, um... There's the income from operations. Um, or if you mean... In this case, I gave one. But I gave a... Um... You can take a photo. Okay. So, let's sit back and just say it's been a great year. Um, we did... We were probably zed a little bit, but not much. We have, um, our reserves right now are at 71.10%. DHD, the state, requires us to have at least 35% of our reserve percentage. And, um... That's really, really healthy. 70% is a really good place to be. It means that... I already got a stoppage. Um, I can see where you're going. Um, if you want to see what I'm talking about, you could go to the second of that 4001 packet. We're gonna skip over the first two pages. I'm gonna shut finance margin off. Um, and you go right to the third page, which is the balance sheet. Does anybody see that? Looks like this. Go right to the bottom. There's 1% there, like the third row on the bottom. It says 71.10%. So every time you look at financial statements, you want, this is the first thing you want to look at, is this number, this 70. This tells you how healthy the economy is. And, um, we're very healthy. This means we're healthy. 35% is what needs to be... Is the minimum. If you're under 35%, you're, um, considered a, like a trouble the board is kind of thing. You only have to stay from dinner and make... The regulations and planes, that's how you can spend the money. Um, of course, the hazard board has usually... As the last three years, I'd say, has been 70s. So we're holding steady here. Um, this year, there have been a couple initiatives. Well, one in particular. Um... With the COVID, DHD gave, um, this 19,000... 73, I lost it again. Uh, yeah. So, DHD gave every thousand authority a certain amount of money. Uh, but they can use for any kind of care... So cares that... From the town, filter down to the state. And, um... Anything to do with COVID. Like, um, any kind of... Like I see we have masks over here, anything like that. Um, I know that Linn had done some work to try to keep so... Do social distancing things. Meaning, keeping the place clean. Um... All those kinds of things, all, all under that category. And we were able to spend every single dollar. What's interesting, what's different about this initiative is they don't just give you the money and say, "Okay, now do your best to spend it." It's like, you have to prove that you're, you're gonna need in order to get the money. So you have to spend it, and then they give it back to you in the form of subsidy. So, in this case, we were able to spend all of it, which is really great. Um, we had until December, but we were able to do it again. Um... In terms of... That, let's go back to that balance sheet. And I'll just highlight a few things. If you notice, line 1122, there's a balance sheet at $1,138. That is all... That is owed to the authority from tenants. Which is excellent. Linn and Nancy do a terrific job collecting rents. And that's what that shows. So that's another thing you want to look at. That shows a well-run authority. Um, and that's pretty much the only thing I wanted to say. Everything else is, um... Cash is also in a good place. 102,000 plus 38,000 invested. So, um, we're a very good place, a very healthy place. Now, let's go back to that first page, that 4001 page. You'll notice that these two pages are identical. And the reason they're identical is the 4001 is made up of three portfolios. A 667, a 200, and a 705. So, we don't have a 200 or a 705, but we do have a 667. And they kind of all combine into this one, but they're identical because we only have one. So you can ignore basically the second page. Looking at the 4001, you'll see that the first column shows the budget and the second column shows, um, the actual... And the last column shows the actual. First column shows the budget for the year. This last column shows how we did against the budget. Now... Looking at, um... Those line items, you'll see that in general, we were... We performed under budget in almost every line. If you go down the line, we did better than income. And that's, that's to be expected. The, um, rents you see are up over last year, what we had budgeted for. Um, and then going down, if you look at each category, total administration, you'll see we did under budget. So for the whole year, all the way down, total utilities account of 4,300. But, um, you'll see again, all the way down, we were under budget, which is phenomenal. The only, um, place that... It doesn't look like we performed well is that total general expenses. And that's because that 45, that... There's some other expenses in there that don't really relate to our board. Employee benefits, it has to do with the pension plan and the, um... Move insurance plan that retirees have, any place have. It doesn't really come out of our funds. Looks like it does with the employee benefit. Um... So what I said, that we do... We used $10,000 of our reserves. Um, based on... You have to add back, it looks like we lost 78,000 of our reserves because there's items in here that don't really involve cash. Like those benefits, that's like a, um... A number that the state wants to see, but it doesn't affect the cash. It's just a basically liability. And depreciation is something that doesn't really use cash. It's just a usage of, um, equipment or the building or whatever. So, um, if you take away those items that don't involve cash, you end up with a loss for the year of $10,891.56. So, in essence, we used 10,000 of our reserves. And what are we using on? Let's go to the next page. Here. What we have here, it's, um... It's act... You have... Well, based, I'll just tell you. That you can't tomorrow do. It's the analysis of non-attained expenses and credits. Uh, it's got a few pages. And it shows you how we spent the money and why we had to go into our reserves. These are the extraordinary items. Um, you'll see that... There's that 19,573, that's a wash because the state gave us the money. But we had an emergency boiler replacement of 44,000 dollars. We had, um, truck maintenance and one of our tenants, as you may be aware, shot himself with suicide. So there's a big expense for that as well. We also bought some appliances, um, some new computers, which we needed greatly. And, um... So between those two things, this, this is where that $10,000 comes from. That we went into out-of-pocket for. Over and above, um, what we had expected to be. And what that means. Is there any questions somehow? Power, okay? So that's... Um, 4001, like I said, our reserves, as I said, we want to set. And, um... It's, it's excellent with the, with the... Um, that's the 4001. If you go over to the... Keep going. You'll see another page towards... Oh, it's the other, it's the other page. It's called 689. Another program, we have the VCRP2 for special needs people, which probably you may not be aware of, but that's what that is. And, um, it's called the 689 program, the state program. And it doesn't receive any additional funding from the state. It's a self-sustaining and... Um, we receive rents and are able to cover our expenses. And even though it looks like it's a deficit of 14,000, you add back that 12,000 and, um, the 3,000 from the... Those gas fee numbers, those are the ones I was telling you about that don't really affect that. Um, you add back those numbers, you end up with $1100 to the bit. So we actually are holding our own on this 689 program. We have $1123. Ooh, ooh, we did it. Um, if you do, if you go to, um, the next page, you'll see that reserve number that we were talking about before. That percentage at the bottom, with the 689 program, we'll write it back. It's 408%. Very healthy. Um, we have cash of 27,000 plus another 37,000 of investment money. Uh, which comes out to about $60,000. It's, it's about, is where we, is like our... Our reserve for any kind of contingencies that may come up. Any questions?
What, what was on the 667 side?
Perfect. Yeah, just great. You're giving the statistics right away for the last three years.
You're a wonderful... Shocking, shocking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is a... That is a draw. So, yeah, that's good. Excellent. I was telling you that your receiving goals are fantastic. Um, and, um... They can use up all of your coin money.
Yep.
Okay. And, um, we were paying you the whole $10,000. And that was because of the learning today.
It was including...
Which was, um, boiler system. Oh, the boiler, the boiler, you're right. Yep. That's a big challenge there.
Okay.
Okay. So, you worked up there.
How many boilers is still originally, original life?
None.
None.
Last one this year.
So, good. I don't know, because I have the class from 1975.
Wow.
People already face one of the... Place to...
Yeah.
All down later.
So that's the mentor. The only other thing that you want to look at is the, um... The last page of this packet. It's called the top five form. This is something you need to look at. That, oh, first, any questions on these statements?
Everybody?
Just note that it is a well-known authority. Linn does a phenomenal job. And Nancy does a great job. Really. I mean, you can't ask for that. The same. Um, this, you will also go down. This is the salary schedule that the state wants to see and make sure that, um, no one is overstepping their...
3%.
Yeah, 3%.
You want to make sure we come with a 3% of what we state in our budget. So, can we all count 3%?
Oh, yeah. So, this is the, uh... Top five salaries. You're only four, you're only four points before you run. Um, these are the salaries that we spent during the year. And it's, um, that's all good. Any questions?
One?
If it's any else.
It's four, four.
Oh, people can... I'm glad you... So, that's...
I should do this, something specific.
So this, this, um, you know, this is what the number they decided on. Fund you.
Okay.
To say that they approved the statements and approved the top five. Excellent.
Can we have a motion that, um, to approve the FY year end of 2021? For both of 4001 and the, um, six, well, 4001 is actually 667 and the 689.
Motion to approve. Thank you.
And before anything leaves today, I definitely have to have this all signed. It has to be back to the LIO's 31st year. So, if you can get that done, it's a matter of... Okay, sorry. Okay, so, um, we have a motion. Um, we're all set of the budget. So, I don't know if we want to go to...
Is there a motion to approve the budget?
Well, we, um, Mr., Mr. Brown has made the motion.
And intercept them.
And, and so we all favor.
Oh, okay. I...
Perfect. So, I apologize to the board. Um, all of this information literally just came through with pricing five minutes before the meeting came in. So I'm actually still waiting for the engineer to call me. He's in a meeting, which ironically, we all met yesterday. And he knew we were gonna be here. He said he would be available. So, I'm not sure what's going on with that situation.
Um, I have a good question.
Sure.
Now that I see this. Do they have to vote separately for the top five or all of this coverage we want?
Probably that separately.
Okay.
They do that. They do this, you, you should do that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm gonna back up a bit because I'm just reading this. Um, the only other thing we have to approve for the year end, which they used to actually do it separately, but now they're all doing it together, is, um, the lead aid certificate. So I just need a vote by the board. Every time a tenant moves in, we give them a lead form and a lead certificate stating that we don't have lead, but to give more information. So I just need a board vote stating that we do do the lead certificate with our evidence and every single tenant that moves in. Um, so we just have to approve the fact that we do it. Is that what it is? Yeah. So, by giving a, um, just a board vote stating that the board is aware that we do do the lead certificates during every, um, incident. We can go ahead and call it that also to the department.
Is there a vote, is there a vote? Is there a motion? Sorry. Who? I...
I'm sorry with that, it's been a hectic morning. So, um, we had a meeting yesterday with the electrical... We had a meeting with the electrical, um... The electrical engineer along with the contractor, along with the fire chief, Mike, myself. And I did invite, um, a board member to come because it's a little overwhelming, all of this. Um, and there are some change order proposals. Some that actually have to be definitely going on. We have $20,000 in the pot. We had already been going on change order one, but I just want to give double motion today from the board that we really have the exact price to go ahead and have the light blocks put up. When they originally did the engineering for the project, the final site project wasn't considered at the time. So the outside lights were just being put on the building directly. But seeing that the building's to be a vinyl sided, we decided to put light blocks under there. Um, and that was one change proposal. DHD gives a certain amount of money you can spend per project for change orders. And in this case, it was about $20,000. So, that being said, we have $15,000 change order, change orders for this specific project. And I'm gonna tell you to the best of my ability, because I am not an electrician or an engineer, what I got out of the conversation yesterday. And I'm gonna let the board, I'm hoping the engineers does call in case there is any question. I'm hoping the board can just bear with me on these change orders. I think between Mike and I and Andy, we can kind of go through the meeting on each specific change order step. So, with that being said, change order number one, you've already kind of opened on, which was putting the blocks up. That's definitely a need to have done. If you turn the packet around, you'll see the total price for putting up. How many blocks?
I think you voted on 17 to now 16, but it's still clearly 21, whatever.
How many blocks are they, everyone? Just to get to the light basis.
There is 21.
All right, so the 21 blocks on that...
It says 16, here's 16, yeah. But you voted on 17, 18, so...
But the total amount to put up those five blocks was $5,083.75. So we knew that was coming. So, the board did vote that. But now that we have a specific price, DHD just asked the board to do a second vote, acknowledging that the blocks were $5,083.75. So, can I have a motion accepted?
I have another motion. I agree. 4,000, I agree.
But if each trucker gave over their contingencies and they get extra money on each project, which is something that we... I wish I could explain it to you.
Just say, just say, go.
How, how much are the blocks literally from Harvey?
I'll walk the high side, 20 dollars.
I mean, it's frustrating. It's, it's, especially when you have a disruption back now.
How would they justify looking at the labor costs? And they put $65 down for each one. I got the catalog right here. And you can see the 15, 16, 17 pieces of...
Well, we did approve it in the beginning. We knew it was gonna be about $5,000, the jobs already done. So I just...
It's finished, Scott.
So, I just asked the board for the final approval and we can move on to the other six change orders here. So...
All right, all right.
Okay.
One, five.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay. So, I am going to skip right to number six because I know this one definitely has to be already told. So, number six. I think this is the opposite arm, I'm going to go. Good. Good, good. We're in the middle of the meeting and, um, I just wanted you to tell me which one's definitely after you. Put one here for the blocks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. I think, can you move on? Number one is the blocks. Not, not, sorry, I'm sorry.
Need one?
Okay, so two, three, I have to go. Yep. Okay. And then, um, it's four, five, six. That's exciting. I think, I think it's a killer way to start off on this. So, um, none of you still over to find any questions? Can I call you back? Okay, thank you. Says it has the information in front of him. This is what we've been dealing with the whole time. And it's very frustrating. Okay.
This is the engineer or...
That's the engineer. So I'm gonna go to... Now, I'm sorry.
Then if that's the case, why don't you just table us until he can be there?
Because if some of this stuff isn't approved, it's gonna push the packet back for months. And I have to be honest, I don't want these people arguing because they are, they're not easy to deal with and, um, you know... So I do really appreciate it because I feel like I've been getting the runner-up. And that's why DHD came yesterday, everybody came. So we can all be on the same page, so we can just get this over with. So, number two, the fire department has requested the electrical contractor to have the COs and trouble report back to the fire department through the radio box. This is the fire department's preference and not a bad issue. But the authority have the, the fire authority does have the jurisdiction. So I believe, if you can bear with me, that number two goes with a couple other numbers on here. So, number two is to actually, um, have, if you decide on the... For excuse everybody. I don't know why you can't put everything on the board. Okay. So I believe, and Mike, you can confirm this, that number two, three, and four go together. So basically, what this is asking is, um... Right now, we have a carbon monoxide detector in each unit and they're flooded. So if something happens which not only, we have not had a carbon, uh, carbon monoxide problem in the unit, but we do have, we still have gas stoves. So, if the carbon monoxide, as of today, goes off, the tenant will call maintenance. Maintenance will go and, um, call the fire department to, to see if there's a carbon monoxide problem. Most of the time, there isn't. So, the way goes is it goes to maintenance first, then it goes to the fire department. The way that two, three, and four would work is it's all programming, it's a programming thing through the system. So, if the carbon monoxide detector, because now it's all one, smoking the carbon monoxide detector is one whole unit. So if the carbon monoxide is set off in the apartment, it will bring to the fire department and a carbon monoxide problem. This is not a state code that this has to be done. But like DHD said, if the fire department is asking for this, then it might, it could, could be a safety issue. You know, Mike's on call 24/7. If, if Mike happens to be two hours away... If Mike happens to be two hours away and somebody calls, you have to get emergency call 24 hours. Mike's away, can't get there in two hours, it could be a carbon problem in the apartment. At this rate, it goes, Mike doesn't even hear from the tenant. It goes right to the fire department. The fire department shows up, they see the beacon blinking on the building, and they can go and see, it'll tell them exactly what apartment to go to. It won't, it won't bother the other three apartments, correct? So this is a great safety feature. It's not a massive fire alarm. So I haven't even had a chance to add up.
It's like $14,800.
$14,800. So this, you might want to hold off about, yeah, on the side, and we can bring this back to the table, but I just wanted to go with these three because these three are together.
The issue with it is, I heard you say, well, we have $20,000 hanging in the budget that we can use, this one's.
Well, mine is fine. Mine is fine.
Yeah, so this eats it all up.
Absolutely.
But I'll always say right now, I just have $24,000, which I told this one, he's gonna come out a little more than 24, 20, because he knows he's got $20,000 here, and the staple people, the other four, so he's gonna get whatever. But how will CO2s work now? I've never been called because of CO sensor with one. I've always been called because the dabs go and then it's beeping. Everybody thinks it's the smoke alarm beeping, but it's not. It's the CO2, the one that's plugged in the wall. So since I've been here, and I'm, you know, cheer for Sichuan, but I've never been here for a CO2 going off as in a line.
So as in a line, that would be the fire department.
Well, no, they would call me because it's the plug-in right now, they would call me. But the only reason why they call me now is because the batteries go low and it jerks, jerks. You know, like I said, it's a wish list, it's bound to stay fireproof, but that's just the background of CO2s that I get.
I think what I'm trying to say is I'm not anti-doing it, but it's $15,000, that's pretty important for our thinking pattern, so.
And honestly, it's a programming thing, so if we decide we do it, the systems step up, are ready to do it, so it would just have to be, my friends have said, I believe it's just a programming thing. So if we have such a money in our mod money next year, we might be able to have the program come back and we program it to work that way. I mean, if they can set it up now, I'm one positive they can set up a new.
I think it looks like he's gotta put some boxes on, there's some materials here that cost $1,000.
Well, we don't have to approve the full, then we could carry on and approve what we want.
I don't hope that's a system issue. What else? You probably good, but.
We might get off the waiting.
I'm looking at, we have 25% insurance and taxes, over in Florida, but we need a change order.
Yeah, they're already here, and they got it.
Exactly.
So they already got five grand.
I generally think there's room to give you.
Let's on a half a wolf instead of a full wolf, right? That's what I'm trying to say.
Let's go wolf, five, six, and seven, so we have any money.
Yes, so number six is a mandatory, must be approved, must be approved due to the fact, and it says, the plants have missed one new battery emergency light head on the unit on the left-hand side of the building. The EC is to add a two light emergency head and wire to the emergency battery unit in the interior wall. This was missed on the plans, the architect realized that he missed out, and this needs to be done. With that being said, I can't say this directly, but I really do believe, because I've heard it from DHD, they also have a portion of money for air conditioning emissions. My only opinion, I think that this would be an error of whoever did the plans, the architect, I'm not even sure if it's going to, that they missed this particular feature. So if the board approves it, I think we can try to fight it back to get the money from the air conditioning instead of the project itself, because this was, there's two errors here that were done on two different change orders. So it needs to be done, it's part of the emergency lighting, and we do need to put them on the side of the buildings.
So that was what I was saying, all right?
Yeah, we have, right now, we have $15,000, I think there's almost $5,000 available for air conditioning, so.
I agree, we can't skip one line, so motion to approve. Change order number six to have the.
Hold on, hold on, that one there. All three of them. But hold on, hold on. What discussion?
He has a question.
It's back to the light blocks again. It did, I don't know if there's light blocks, where are they going to go? It's on the outside.
Well, that makes sense.
You have to question now, where are they going? Because I thought it was on the other side of the doors, I'm not sure.
And I know the brick, the side of the building's a brick.
No, no, like, it's going outside on the light. Have to find out where the doors, so there might not be light blocks.
I think, Joe, I just thought like that, why don't we go through all of them, I'd call him right back from right here and ask him if that's gonna be light blocks.
They're saying because he's put $16,000 in here for light blocks. Yeah, and they didn't, they were going, it's on the other side of the door, it might be on the other side of the porch, I'm not sure where they go. I thought they were going to the side of the porch, but you can just check on that.
I can text the contractor right now.
Well, the architect, he's the one who.
According to this whole thing, there is a plan that shows all these light blocks, there's one missing. It doesn't show light blocks, it shows these lights.
Seven, there's seven missing here.
There's seven missing?
Yes. Seven blocks is illiterate right here. It's on every building, he missed one side.
On every building, yes.
Of the two-story buildings.
All right, that makes a little more sense.
All right, so I just put enough, so you put the five side, no, no, six side, no, I mean, that. No, we'll wait to see if that includes light blocks. And, because I'm, you have my question.
It doesn't include it, it's, yeah, it's in the change order.
Oh, it is.
But the question is, do we need them? Where are they going? If they're going on the inside of the porch, you don't need them, if they're going on the outside, where the siding is, then.
All right, so if you, I'm gonna get all my questions for the end, and I want to call the engineer, and I will ask you all these questions, so.
I don't think, I think we can approve it either way because.
We don't need a lot of.
We'll see if they're on.
All right, so while we need a motion to approve, and.
Can I just sign it?
Yep, just one more second.
All three of them.
Aye. Mike, it's number four, if you remember yesterday, it was number four, did that have to be done? Or is that because of the carbon monoxide detector? The fire department requests to the EC add an additional addressable relay module at radio box to trip each individual building.
I'm not sure if that is.
All right, I'm gonna put this one aside. Number five.
Hope you explain to the viewers out there that you just got this.
Yes.
One of them did decide it, so.
Yes, we got this side, which is all of them aside, that's why we're trying to do the best we can, right? Or explain that. So number five, they have to add additional S L T surge protection because the wiring that was increased, I mean, that's to help see loop and not individual wires to trip a zone unit. So I guess this was noticeable when they, when they started doing the wiring, they found out that the electrical, the original electrical plan didn't say that it was, it was individual, but it's actually a loop. So in order for this specific, this specific area to work, they need to add surge protection in case of whether it's storm or lightning.
Yeah, yeah, but surge, but the surge, yeah.
Yeah, so they have to add a surge protector. And this definitely has to be. 3,000 feet, 700, 30,000 feet, 30,000 feet. So it must be in the big buildings, right? Because it's only seven, so it has to be in the tall buildings.
Yeah, well, well, it is because the handicap building and building 910 are on the same circuit, I would say, but they put the wiring, so that building, that building are all on one.
All right, so that's how many, seven.
Circuit.
Okay, I explained that, but this is, most of the projects not gonna be able to work without going forward and then putting the surge protectors in. So we just need a motion to approve the 3,000, 733 feet.
We are getting approved number six, right?
Yeah, we have, we have number five. The only thing that matters is light blocks, it's a little bit money difference.
You can put number five.
One for what it wants.
Yep.
3,900 dollars. And how much is this one again?
The number five, the surge protection is, if you turn up, $2,733.87.
If you have to approve that 9,000, this puts us at 12,700.
Okay.
All three of them.
Aye.
Did we have a motion, Scott?
No.
No? No, no, I'm motion, or, yeah, motion to approve it.
We want to approve this, let's go through the others first.
Okay.
Not so yet.
Okay. Number seven. The light shall serve as a change proposal request to provide proposal for the following changes, the original contract to add five smokes within the handicap bedroom for the fire department. So this, I think, was oversight also, correct, Mike?
I don't believe it was.
I think that originally the thought for the, was it the architect, or the engineer? Was that because the stove, the handicap units have the living room and the kitchen all within the same area. So they were afraid that if something happened to the stove, that smoke on the stove that it would set off the alarm. So they didn't put one in that area. But it's an electrical code, it has to be there, so this is also one of those, this must happen. It's only $1,355.01. But I have, yesterday, they literally said four.
It is, he pressed out four, but it says five.
Oh, okay, I was, I had that question, all right, so basically, it's actually four. Yeah, it's not four, yeah. Four, four, four.
Yeah, four is that.
Pressed out four with a five place.
But fortunately, that's.
The carbon weather's what's wrong, yeah, there's only 94.
There's only one, four.
Pressed out four.
Yes.
It's just this table. All right, so I'm gonna stick through, through to the.
Yes.
That's all of them, other than the other three?
I don't understand, so if the question is on four.
Two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four.
I wanna make a motion to approve the change orders on five and seven, seeing they need to be done.
Seven.
All three of them.
Aye.
Again, with that four change orders approved, we're at close to $15,000.
And the light block will be a question, because if they can put it somewhere that doesn't need light blocks, then that's, I don't know, it's about, should be a solid, I mean, yeah.
I think we need to hold off on the two, three, and four.
All right, I just want to make sure two, three, and four all together, four might be separate, so I'll take a short break, I'm just calling the engineer, and hopefully he answers my question.
All right, we're gonna move to us.
Aye.
All three of them.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna now back inside.
So we did call the engineer on the number four, and he did state that this one has nothing to do with the carbon monoxide, but it is a addressable relay module that goes back from the unit to the fire department that does need to be done, so the fire department goes which specific, we got, is that what it might be, unit, per unit? It may say building one or two, building three or four. So that at least tell them where to go, usually when they come, the light's blinking, but that is something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, what that will do is that'll, I don't think I heard her go, but the way I interpreted it, that'll trigger the beacon outside, and then they can go to the box, and it'll tell us what apartment it is. But whoever calls is gonna call and say.
Yeah.
So we want to, we keep three of them.
No, just four, two and three is still on the table.
Just four. Got a motion to approve, both.
Second motion?
Do we know why this wasn't out of the original engineer?
Well, this was a fire department request. But I think that it does need to be done, so they'll know, they'll fill in one, two, three, four. It won't say, it won't say building two or building three, it'll just say building two and three. When they come, I believe the beacon will be flashing.
That's another request for the fire department, it's probably not in.
But that's what he's done, he did say it needs to be done.
This is so, at the fire station, we just don't know which building before it, that's it?
Yes, yep.
There was a motion, I'll send it. All three.
Aye. So in speaking to the engineer on two and three, it's something that was requested by the fire department. The engineer did state that by a certain year, all housing authorities have to go from gas stoves to electric stoves. It's not allowed in Massachusetts to have a carbon monoxide detector directly to the fire department. So he suggested that in three to four years, we won't even need that to be done, so I'm just leaving up to the board whether to go forward with it. The engineer really didn't feel that it needed to be done, nor is it a safety issue after having done. The fire, the fire team did agree yesterday that it would be a safety feature, but just advised us to go with the code.
I don't think we have the money in extras to approve it, and I don't think that it's something that needs to be done for any safety issues. It's a convenience thing, our safety thing.
Absolutely, yeah. Did you want to make a motion to table in case anything comes down the road? But I really believe too that we don't need it, because we have, we absolutely need it for electric stoves.
I'll make a motion that we do not approve the request orders, the change orders to and through. Last second, all three of them.
Aye.
What does this do for the actual bid?
So what happens is, they, if you look at the bid, and the engineer tried to talk about this a couple times yesterday, the minimum bid, I think, you know, is a hundred, in the whole, below $100,000. The second place bid is $2,000. So I mean, I'm assuming that, obviously, if the first contractor did that, he could do it for that price. They put aside a certain percentage for change orders. So we have the money to give these change orders, if it goes over a little due to errors, then we can go to the air conditioning money, and each specific project has a cover for change orders. So we already have one for the fire side project, and as we started. Sometime the engineers will. Um, sometimes the engineers don't, sometimes the engineers go by the plan, and like here, we have a laundry room that sits here, it used to be a bathroom, the laundry room is still here. So when they did the electrical, they did it like we had, still have a separate laundry room. Um, to me, they should come out to the project and walk it, that would happen on this, I'm not sure happening with vinyl siding project, but every project has additional places for, you know, changes or things that may come on.
You know the business?
Just, just let the board...
First motion?
All three of them.